I'd like to call this Columbia Board of Selectmen Regular Meeting to order Tuesday, May 21st, 2024. This is a hybrid meeting. It will be on electronically. And if you are asked a question, please tell who you're representing because we do demonstration here today. And if you're a citizen of Columbia, please give us your name and address. And as always, we expect respect to and from the board, to anybody who's in the room or on electronic. I would ask you to join me in my pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. We give you the very highest standing for the Constitution. So the agenda, I've been notified that you'd like to add two things. Add Jim Blair to the Subcommittee for Columbia Road and Culver Evaluation. And the board has to vote on that. But, and then the other one is Jeff Morrison as Marine Patrol Officer. So since we have to change it for one, we'll do unboth against. I move to modify the agenda, I move to approve the agenda for agenda with two modifications. Add a new member to the Subcommittee for Columbia Road and Culver Evaluation and add a new Marine Patrol Officer. Anywho, all those in favor?
I'm fine.
Thank you. I move to approve the board's second regular meeting minutes for May 7th, 2024.
I wanted to point out, last page, paragraph 15. First sentence, we see last letter of order, for HDI voting, may is required to generally statute. Or should I say statute now?
Let me just go ahead. All those in favor to approve the minutes from the May 7th meeting with the correction? You know, for the eye. Close, thank you. Audience, citizen. I see we do have Barbara. Barbara, you'll wave at me if you want to get in our audience and citizen, otherwise, welcome to the meeting.
Thank you, I'm all set.
Thank you. Okay, whole business. We have a guest here, two of them, I think one's online still.
Yes, Bill Lindsey's online. I don't see him. There he is.
There he is. All right, Mark.
Bill Lindsey's online and Mark is here.
Want you toast.
And Bev and I interviewed two firms. We felt Munistat was the best fit for Columbia. Based on their style and their experience with the environment in Columbia, which is a small town. And they had the best answer for combining the aspects of not just one project, which would be school, but also possible other projects involving Culvers and Rose. And pulling together one bond issue instead of multiple bond issues. And as a result of last meeting, we invited them in for more direct questions. We sent out the questions you had based on that meeting in advance, which led to this presentation for you. And I'll turn it over to Bev.
Great, thank you, Mark. Again, my name is Bill Lindsey, represent the firm of Munistat Services. We're out of Madison, Connecticut. My colleague, Mark Chapman, is there in the audience. I unfortunately had a conflict this afternoon, so I wasn't able to attend in person. So Mark is pinch hitting for me in person, which is a little strange, but what I, what I thought we would do is, and I, I think, Bev, I can, can I share my screen?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, because what I, what I'd just like to do is maybe run through the presentation briefly. Not going to cover every slide, but want to just introduce who we are at Munistat and what we do. And then talk about the financing process. And I know there were some questions that Mark and Bev had provided that had come up, I think, at previous meetings that we wanted to discuss as well. So in the, in the presentation, again, Rock, don't need to go through every slide, but beginning on slide number four, just about us. So Munistat is an independent municipal advisory firm. And by, by independent, that means we are not a bank or a broker dealer. So we do not buy and sell bonds. We, our sole purpose is to represent the town and be the town's advocate and help them come to market. We're not looking to take the town's bonds and sell them on the secondary market. We work for the town and the town alone, and we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town to represent their interests above our own. We, the firm Munistat was established in 1977. We have offices in Madison, Connecticut, where Mark Chapman and I both work from. We also have a home office in Port Jefferson Station, New York, on Long Island. We've got a total of eight municipal finance professionals work between those two offices. And we have, you know, in Connecticut, we have a map for you in a second of 65 clients. We've got over 200 clients in New York State. So we've almost 300 clients between the two, between the two states. One other thing I wanted to point out is that Munistat was a founding member of what is now the National Association of Municipal Advisors. So this is a professional organization of people and firms like ours. Some in small firms like ours, some very large firms, some of the largest firms in the country. But, you know, we were Munistat and Munistat's founder were original members of that organization. And that organization is, exists to, you know, create and apply professional standards for the industry that we're in, and that industry that represents the local governments. So we're very proud of that. Our Connecticut team, obviously, it's Mark and myself, we have a third individual who's in our Madison office, name is Susan Karen. You know, we kind of split up the, the number of clients we have fairly evenly. I think I've got 24 now, you know, Mark's got 20, Susan's about 21. So, you know, we all, we work very closely together. And so, you know, we're able to have some good depth of staff in an event like tonight where if one of us has got a conflict, the other person is there to support us. In terms of what we do, so, you know, I know this was, the town hasn't really been in the market in a few years. So I wanted to kind of explain our role here. So our role as municipal advisor is, would normally be to come in and discuss with the town during like the planning stages of a project. And help them develop a plan of finance. Oftentimes, it's ahead of the referendum where we may come in and provide some information regarding tax impacts or what debt service impact is, the budgetary impact. Here in this instance, at least for the school HVAC, the town has already, obviously already come to referendum on that. So, but we, you know, we would still be helping the town prepare, you know, the timing of the issue and the sizing of the issue, which I'll talk about in a minute. But to the point that Mark just made a little bit ago. You know, in our interview, we discussed the idea that given the town is not a regular issuer of bonds and that the town does have other needs in terms of the Culvert projects. It might make some sense to try to time out the two packages, if possible, so that we only came to the bond market one time. So one offering, one offering statement, but just two projects being financed. The regular practice that, that goes on across the market every day. And, and what we talked about was the idea of using what are, an instrument called short term, or this short term borrowing instrument called bond anticipation notes, which were included and approved in the resolution that this body adopted ahead of the referendum for the school project. And the idea might be is if the timing of the two projects, because again, our understanding of the culverts is that, you know, there, there needs to be identified the exact ones and the priority, and then the engineering needs to be done. So the timing might not work out where that would be something that would be done at the, maybe slightly after the school HVAC, given that the grant commitment had a deadline of the end of December 25. But the town could conceivably issue short term notes for its share of the HVAC project. And have those notes come due in a year. And at that time, you would be ready and have bid out the culverts. And then we could issue one set of bonds for both projects. That would be, you know, I think the ideal situation. So we, that would, that would be our role is to look at that and say, okay, what are the timing of the projects? What are the cash flows? What are the pros and cons of coming together with one issuance versus say two issuance? Once, once those decisions have been vetted and, and been made, we would now help the town come to the market, access the market to raise the funds. So whether that's on short term borrowing or long term borrowing, we would still need to prepare a prospectus, what we call an official statement. There's a picture of your last one here. And we help the town put that together. We use our experience of those, you know, almost 300 clients between New York and Connecticut. And we would say, okay, this is the information that the market is looking for. This is, we need to prepare. We would work with, with Mark and Bev to put that information together. If it's long term bonds, go to the credit rating agencies, get it rated. And then, and then ultimately have a sale of those bonds to the public. One other point, and I have in a, in a, in a subsequent slide, we'll walk you through the process a little bit more in detail, but that's the general gist of it. The one thing I wanted to remind the town of is once the town issues their bonds and as long as the bonds remain outstanding, town will have what we call a continuing disclosure obligation. Meaning that when the bonds are outstanding, those investors who purchased the bonds, say 20 years maturity, will expect or will require that the town provide information to the market annually for the life of those bonds. So we will assist the town with that. Again, it's something that we do for our 65 Connecticut clients. We do it in, for over 200 clients in New York State. And it's, there is a central repository that has been developed that that information is submitted to and is available to the public. And we will be the town's liaison in making that annual continuing disclosure information available. You know, again, I wanted to just, don't need to go through every single slide, but here on slide 11, give you a sense as to who our clients are across the state. They vary from small towns like Bolton, all the way up to Greenwich or Norwalk, West Hartford. Barger issuers, we're actually the financial advisor for the MDC in Hartford, for the Southern Water and Sewer Authority around Hartford. And if you kind of look where Columbia is here on the map, we've got a number of clients up here in, in this part of the state that we work with, including Coventry, Mansfield. To name a few. In terms of the bonding process, I wanted to just again, kind of run through that in a little more detail. Because again, the town hasn't been in the market for a few years. So just remind you all of what that, what that means and what that looks like. So here, you know, we've got a diagram that kind of talks about who the players are in this process. So the town in red being the issuer of the bonds. We are your financial advisor. We assist you in the, in the marketing and the sale of the bonds. There was another firm, that's a law firm, that's for the town, it's Uptight Kelly and Spelacy. Is the, is the bond counsel. And the bond counsel's role there, attorneys who would issue a legal opinion. That legal opinion says that the towns, first the bonds were duly authorized, according to Connecticut statutes, one. And then two, that the interest on the bonds would be exempt from federal and state income taxes. That's really one of the main drivers of the municipal market. And that's what investors are looking for. So, you know, financial advisor, Munistat, Uptight Kelly and Spelacy is bond counsel. We kind of said on the sounds, the town's side of the table, if you will. The opposite side of the table would be the underwriter who purchases the bonds from the town and acts as a wholesaler. Because he's ultimately selling it to investor, okay? And those, those that, those underwriters would, you know, are names that you're familiar with. JP Morgan, Raymond James, you know, Goldman Sachs, those kind of firms. Buying the bonds from the town and then selling them on to the ultimate investor who holds them to maturity. Two other parties to the transaction that you, you may also be familiar with, one is the rating agencies. So Moody's Investor Service, Standard and Poor's, Fitch Ratings. The town would engage one or potentially more of those rating agencies to put a rating on the bonds. Long term bonds historically have a credit rating. And that helps make the bonds more attractive to investors. So we would, you know, we'll assist the town with that process and develop a rating strategy. And then ultimately a presentation to the rating agencies. And then finally, there's a, under Connecticut law, required of the town to hire a paying agent and registrar. We refer to them as a trustee often in the, in the market. For general obligation bonds, we don't necessarily need a trust agreement, but they, one firm serves all these roles. The, the firm that does this in Connecticut is US Bank. And they, they represent just about every Connecticut local government issuer across the state. Really what the purpose of this is, is the, is a state statutory compliance issue where you need to have this one firm that is the registrar of the bonds. And that they are the ones that make the debt payments to, and then ultimately goes through a clearinghouse to the investor. This was, I think this is slide 14 is the, is the important, most important one here for, for you all. This is just a little bit deeper dive into that, into that rating process. I'm sorry, into the issuance process. So just to work through this kind of briefly. In, in step one, you know, we develop a financing program that usually means reviewing the existing debt. Looking at what's been approved and then developing a financing plan. Here again, for one of the projects, the HVAC project, you know, obviously the resolution has been adopted and passed at referendum. So we have those amounts. It's just really a question of developing the timing of the issuance and the sizing of the issuance, which really kind of brings us into step two, where we kind of develop the financing terms. So we would, we would again, discuss what, you know, the, the timing of when that the Culvert projects may be ready. And, you know, when the engineering is completed and when, when you may be planning to go to referendum for those. And then see if it's possible to time out the two projects together with one issuance. And we would give you a sense as to what, what that looked like, what the timing would be. What the structure of the bonds would be, forming with Connecticut statutes, and then what the budgetary impact would be. In step three, once we've cleared those hurdles, once we've determined is, is it feasible to have the two projects financed at the same time? Do we need to use short term borrowings to time up the two projects? Or is that not possible? Once we've established all that, now we would begin to talk about the actual issuance of the bonds. So here, you know, we're, we're determining the method of sale, which, you know, I think for all discussions we've had with Mark and Bev and based on the town's history would be a competitive sale. So we advertise through the financial, public, you know, financial media. And we have a competitive sale and, and major broker dealer firms come in and bid through electronic bidding process. It's open to the public. It's a sealed bid process similar to any other procurement process the town would undertake. That would, you know, at this point in time, that's our recommendation is to have a, a public sale, a competitive sale. And we can talk a minute in a little bit about the difference between a bank direct placement and a public sale, because I know that's one of the questions that came up. But for now, you know, our recommendation really is to have a public sale. And so we would, we would establish that timeline, right? And then we would then bring us to step four, which is put together the offering statement that I showed you earlier. Give a list of information that we need to complete that offering statement to the, to the town, to town staff. And they would go to the various departments, including Board of Ed, compile that information, get it back to us. We circulate some drafts to look at, everyone to review. And then that leads us into step five, which is the credit, the credit rating process. Again, establish a rating strategy. Is it going to be one rating agency? Which rating agency? And then prepare that presentation, have the, have the call with the rating agencies, and then ultimately get the bonds rated. That brings us to step six, which is the marketing and sale. So we would, once the prospectus is signed off on and everyone is comfortable with the disclosures, we have our rating. We'd advertise our sale. We go out to market on a set date and we take bids. We review the bids at Munistat, we review the bids, we check the mathematical accuracy of them, and then we make a recommendation on the award based on the, the scope or the, the parameters established in the, in the notice of sale. We make the award and then we move on to providing, we move on to closing, where the town receives the funds. We assist the town in that process. The town gets the money in and then, you know, can, can fund the project. So that's, that's really the, the presentation on, on who we are and what, what we do. So I don't know, Mark, would you, would you, do you want to open it up for questions now? Or do you want me to, to move to the questions that you provided?
Advance. I like that. You may have been written in, but I'll ask the question I have. The short term notes, let's say we have to do a short term notes for one year, you can do them for two years. The problem is, do we have, and I don't know the answer to that, but many is on here. Do we have to bond for the entire cost of, and then at the end, when it's completed, will we pay back the grant?
Right. So, so the, um, direct answer, no. The way this works now is under state statute, you can only issue long term bonds for the town's net share of the project. Okay, so if you think about the way the resolution was worded and the referendum question was, it talked about the full, you know, 6.175 million of, of first an appropriation to spend, right? And then two, it had authorization to issue up to 3.396 million. And so what, what we would be doing is only issuing the long term bonds when we finally get to that step for the net share after grants. During construction, all right, during the actual HVAC work, the state has a program where they would, you submit invoices to them. And they would reimburse you after the expenditures have been made. Right? So making the distinction between issuing the short term bonds, short term notes, excuse me, and long term bonds. You're authorized to issue up to 3.396 million of either bonds or notes in either form. So theoretically, we could issue that whole amount in short term notes first, right? Complete the project. Establish what the final reimbursement was, and then issue bonds for only the balance that is, that needs to be financed. If that makes sense.
But short term notes are generally, uh, normally higher interest than bond rates?
So normally, no, they're not. Actually, in the, typically, when we've got a positive sloping yield curve, the short term rates are lower than, than, than the long term rates. That usually is anywhere from 75 basis points to 150 basis points lower, all right? However, right now, we have what we refer to as an inverted yield curve. So the short end of the curve is actually higher than the longer end, which is an unusual situation. It's a situation that hopefully doesn't continue. And when the Fed, if and when the Fed starts to cut rates, that the hope is that the short end will come down. The, the good news about, you know, the, the positive, if you will, with respect to the short term rates and inverted yield curve, we're only going out a year. So the amount of interest that's, that you end up paying is a relatively manageable amount with respect, because the term is only for a short amount of time. And again, the, um, well, so that, that, that's, that's the situation we find ourselves in with the, with the inverted yield curve, right? In the normal case, a normal point in time, and, and when, you know, the town bids the project and, and looks to need to, need to put the financing in place, the hope is that the Fed will have started to cut short term rates either this fall or early next year, and will, you know, that, that inversion will start to work itself out.
In your experience, what is the typical term for the bonds?
So for, in terms of the, the term, we, we, we will time up the term or match the useful life of the asset to the term of the bonds. So the question would be to the architects and engineers, and we, and the IRS does have a table that we will consult that references this. You know, we, we're going to match the term up to the, to the bond. So we're dealing with the culverts, you know, you could conceivably go 30 years statutorily, again, for the use, for the useful life. You know, for the HVAC, I would expect it to be something less than that. But we'll, we'll consult the, both the engineering and experts and the IRS for what the appropriate term is for, for HVAC.
And what is typical, you had mentioned earlier about the continuing disclosure obligations. My question is, what is the estimated cost per year for something like that? You know, what, what will the town have to endure for additional costs, the disclosure requirements?
Right, so it's, and I'm just pulling out our proposal, so I have the information in front of me. It's a, it's a very modest fee. It's $750 annually would be the minimum. I don't reasonably see it going over that, because the town would only have, again, if we are able to time this out so that we have one long term bond issue for both the culverts and the HVAC project, town would have one outstanding bond issue, so it'd be $750.
So once we establish a dollar amount, we can't add to it if we needed to borrow more money?
Well, um, that's correct. So in, in the resolution that the, the board adopted that led to the referendum, and in the referendum question, you've already established what the authorization is. So that was $3,396,250. So in the event, the unfortunate event that if the project came in more than what the appropriation was, then we, you know, you, you would have to make a decision as the financing source for that, that delta. Would it be go back to the voters and ask them to approve the difference? Or do you take it out of fund balance? Or, you know, we would have to have a conversation with Uptight Kelly and Spelacy to confirm, right? Because they're, they're, they're the ones who wish for the legal opinion, not us. But I'm telling you, from my experience in, in, for doing this for 20 years, yeah, you, you've already established that amount in, when you went to referendum. And that's the $3,396. Yeah, and, and I guess I could, if I, Mark, if I could add one thing, the, the good news is looking at the grant commitment, it's roughly $400,000 more than what is anticipated to be your net share. The grant commitment letter from the state had it at $2,290,900. So we, you've got a little bit of flexibility where you could conceivably borrow additional $400,000 on a short term basis to help cover the town during construction until the state monies come in. And then after a year, when the project's complete, the state monies have all been established, they've come in, we could use that money to pay off the short term notes and then issue bonds for just that net share. So there, there is a little bit of flexibility built into the number.
Does the short term note hurt our bond rating, our rating?
No, not at all. For the, the short term notes, you know, we would have to make a decision and, and we would, you know, make a recommendation. and, and we would, you know, make a recommendation to the town, is do we get them rated or do we not get them rated? Um, that's going to depend, it's really a cost benefit analysis, and it really depends on the market. Um, for what we're seeing right now for a note that's about three point four million, we wouldn't recommend getting it rated, because the cost of the rating and the additional cost to the members of the financing team, to us and bond council, it, it's going to exceed the savings that you would have with a note, with a rated note. Generally speaking, a rated note may trade um, a little bit lower in cost, but given the small size we're dealing with here, it, the savings wouldn't be enough to offset the cost. So um, we would make that, we don't have to make any of those decisions right now. Once, once we, you know, the project's been bid and you're at a point where you need the financing, that's when we would make that decision. And we would look at what the, the spread is on rated versus not rated notes then. But based on today, we wouldn't recommend you pay for a short-term rating.
I'm looking at a ten-year short-term. Is it better just to, short-term note, than a ten-year term, with each back?
First of all, within, where did it, three million, three point three? A ten, ten-year note? I think we could get on that, can't we?
I can see what.
Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars somewhere in there. Four hundred years back?
It certainly would be ten-year, it'd be a ten-year bond.
Right, now, right.
Well, I'm just, I, I'm looking at your chart you gave us, and it says it's two point eight five on a ten-year short-term. And, and is that yourself, age back, I mean, what's the life getting back?
Yeah, so I, what I-
Uh, and I'm thinking age back.
And we would provide you with analysis, that you'd say, okay, this is what the impact is for ten years. This is twenty years analysis.
What for note?
Well, short-term note is one year. You can only have it for one year. Standard, you can go. Bill, are you hearing this?
Yeah, yeah, it, it, you know, um, yeah, so what we, in, for, at least for municipal bonds, a little bit different than the tax or treasury market. When we talk about notes, we're talking two years or less. So you can go up to two years statutorily. It's a little bit cumbersome, because you have to make a payment by twelve months on the note, so it's not like you can go the whole twelve-month term and not make a, a, a periodic interest payment. It can be done, w- we've done it before, it's just a little bit cumbersome. Um, and it needs to be a budgeted for, but we would, you know, we would know that going in. But normally, it's twelve mon- it's twelve months or less is the term when we talk about notes. With respect to the useful life of the asset, yeah, I, I, I don't expect it's going to be twenty years for the HVAC. I think it's going to be there ten or fifteen. Um, and, and, and so that would be, you know, that would be what the term is. And, and you're absolutely right, a- as it stands right now with the inversion in the yield curve, ta- at the ten-year uh, rate is lower than the one-year rate, which is, again, not typical. Um, so, and all the more reason to, to um, to issue the bonds for ten years. But in, in this particular context, the, the whole idea with the short-term notes is really to try to get the two projects on the same timeline for financing. So the short-term notes for the HVAC would provide financing, say, this summer, complete the work this summer and not issue the bonds, wait for the HVAC, the timing of the HVAC, we could issue notes for that. And then it, say, in two years, issue bonds for everything and be done. That, that's what the working um, idea is. But we need to have a better sense from the engineers as to the timing of those culvert projects. And if design is going to take longer than we think, or the, 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 establishing the priority of which culverts you're going to do, and what those amounts are, aren't such that it, it, it works, then, then yeah, we could issue the bonds. We could issue one set of bonds next summer, and then, and theoretically, a culvert bonds the following summer, if, if, if we're not able to get them both on the same path.
I, I, if I were to debate it, man, I don't think they'd be ready to go uh, within a year. That's me, uh, you know. But I don't know, maybe, maybe.
And importantly, these-
Or do that extra time, right?
Yeah, and these decisions don't need to be made tonight, they don't need to be made um, in, you know, for, for a couple of months here. So I think we have a little bit of time to flush that out. And if, and if you're right and, and not able to time them up, then we, there's two separate bond issues. I think i- it's important, we haven't talked about this yet, but the, the total cost of issuance for a bond issue, right, is going to be about seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars. Um, so if we, you know, it's not a, 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 a burden sum or punitive sum. And based on the amounts in the resolution, six million, one seventy-five versus the amount, the amounts in the grant commitment, you've got wiggle room or built-in issuance costs of, of at least seventy-five thousand dollars. So we could conceivably capital, it's been, seems to be, have, have been anticipated in there. Um, and so that wouldn't be a budget expense, it would be a capital expense. And we could plan, plan that out the same way, when, when the time is right for the culverts, is, we would add an issuance cost number to the engineering estimate to come up with a number to bring to the public. And that way, it's not a, a budget expense, it's a, it's a capital expense.
Anybody else have questions concerned? We're really discussing these two gentlemen are, you know, that's a firm we want to go with. Any more? All right, so in saying that, we're going to go right now, should we? I move to authorize Mark Waltz, our administrator, entry to a contract of UNISTAT service design with municipal advisory service. Any more to discuss? I feel pretty, pretty good with the answers and uh, presentation, thank you very much, gentlemen, so. No other discussion, all those in favor? I suppose. Welcome to the Town of Columbia.
Thank you.
All right, very good. Now we got to get the map here.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. We just leave for check for three point three million, and we'll be back in a minute. Very good, thank you so much for being on tonight, I don't have any time for everything.
My pleasure.
One last, one more question. Now we have to figure out all the pieces of financing thought from the government. Any too. Pay it up sooner and Okay, next is the fourth quarter for age back and grants. We, we got the notice and official, we got it, and included it. Um, seven and a year. Well, we have a question that our engineering firm is wondering if this state is going to hold us to September thirty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. Then, it seems like it's a big ask.
I have, I have to find out if that's kind of completed, or is it, or is it pretty short, or is it in motion? So now that they have, I don't know, they, well, they made this public information.
I think it said completed.
Was that completed?
One more we can play, like, that's what it's called for me, so that's. Can you, can you do me a favor, and this is just me and my pessimism are. Can you make it September twenty twenty-five? So when they say we can't meet that deadline, but we're going to, you don't only be a month late, we're actually two months early. So. So, 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 I have some um, contingencies. There's always been a lot of that, so, okay. The general. And in the service, we've had something called tip fit, when you sit, you know, you, you look out at your end date, and what you hope to accomplish, and you just move every step back to find out where, it's just like they do it. Give us two to three months of construction to finalize it. You know, we, we want to end in September, see what they can do with, when you walk the bill. That should, my own personal, because if it came to January fifth of twenty twenty-six, and the state said, nah, 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 you know, it'll be a little tough then.
So part of the application was getting a timeline, which is what Silver Country Chelly gave me.
Yeah.
And.
So they gave a timeline, but they didn't give a question.
Why?
Matter? Yeah, okay, and we haven't even picked anybody to win, so. It's an important.
State did take five minutes, calling numbers to say, yeah.
We still have over a year completed. Let's get with the school. Barbara, I'm going to need uh, school next year from February to June to go to split sections. So we end it in March, and we get the construction people in there on the first of April to finish this project, okay? But don't worry, we have a year planned now.
Okay.
In the words of Chris Lynn, don't worry, we have a year.
A little word.
I know. I believe you, I know you do all you can, and we will, we practice the six P. You've got a layer of that. Yes, I am. Okay. Uh, approval of the EVSE charging station, making, yeah, project resolution. What does that mean? Yeah. Well, right now, this is a kind of backward. The state is requiring that, this is their resolution they need for the EV charging project. And they provided it for us, we just plugged in proper words and names of Columbia. Uh, but this is what they require, we'll do this resolution, get it back to them. Uh, in your bills you're approving, we're sending them forty-nine thousand dollars, which they will be returning us. So it's a This says fifty-eight thousand.
So they're working on finalizing the amount, there has been some changes, and they're finding out they, in talking to Titan to fix that up. So what happens, when everything started, you had given Mark permission, so you have to basically approve that he has continued to have the authority and to sign on behalf of the town to do the present, whatever, in time. The state required payments from the Town of Columbia to pay Titan, basically for services rendered to get the EV charging in place. So basically, we have to get the check to them. And once they deposit it, I will get the cancel check and all the documentation sent into the state, and then the state will reverse the tab. Um, so it's going to be an in and out on the budget. Um, so there's not a budget impact where we have to go out to town meeting or anything like that. So it's just a formality that we just recently found out about.
And that's fine, that's fine, just remember, you know, the federal government is going to give us two million dollars that we gave to fix a bridge over there. You know, we just, again, they changed. So the question is essentially regarding fifty-eight thousand dollar grant, you're telling me we're spent?
It's going, so Titan is now working with the state to correct that amount.
Okay.
Actually, it's less. It's a couple thousand less, but in order for this to get finished, they're trying to sell the notice, I'll send them the information tomorrow. Uh, once we get this signed, and then hopefully they'll fix all that. And then Mark will sign the agreement, as long as you certify this resolution, and then hopefully all the charges are up and running, they're being used and
No, but it's free to sign.
In any way, so. Based on water, then, you know, nothing comes through the state in part four, and so they, you know, they're just trying to
Is this your original that you sent over? Somebody sent, or is this what I'm saying?
So. It's part of the care then. Contract is that, well, with the fifty-eight thousand, there's a full agreement, but
Oh.
We need this signed and put by the board of selectmen, and then um,
Rob Steames.
And it's just, yeah.
I swear that I Okay, so I'm just saying, there was no, there was no, where it brought us on, so we To look at the minutes, book, be that it was approved, okay.
Oh, that he can negotiate
Yes.
So now they want a resolution, informal resolution that you, they're proven, just only again, yes, and
So it makes sense, part of the voting that we know the amount subject to down revision, that way it's inside, but when it comes down, it's already been
So if my willing, because if I have to redo it, then I'll come back, just saying, just whatever the, you know, I don't think we're going to get that full amount, but I had to put it in there, it's not right, so. Um.
Well, you can, in case supply resolution with the final uh, grant amount to be
Determined.
Determined by state, I think.
That end, but
Might be.
Yeah, so it might have changed, but their template wanted an amount, so. Um, just say you could just leave the amount out, and just put, guide in a grant to more, for the state connect with.
I move to approve the supply resolution for the EVSE charging station project.
They're just in a debt, I mean, they can say it with.
Excellent. I move to approve the supply resolution for the EVSE charging station project. Uh, mention name.
And that Mark has full authority to
Execute.
Execute.
And Mark Waltz, our administrator, has full authority to execute, all in the fair. Oh, thank you. Okay, this is in addition, point Jim Blair. Um, I move to approve the appointment of Jim Blair to the subcommittee for the Columbia Road and Culvert Evaluation. What the staple chase thing right now?
Skip move this.
Oh, I skipped one. Right there, yes.
So.
You did. He welcomed it. He had it. Six point four is the old release.
Oh.
Because that's what, that's the Jim Blair one, because it's subcommittee. Right, so I could have said that, so they're still over the six point four. I move to approve the appointment of Jim Blair to the subcommittee for the Columbia Road and Culvert Guidance. Because it's already been estab- established, all those are there. Now, uh, I move to approve Stephen Everett signing the thirty-third annual sequel chase bike event fund. Sorry. Marine patrol individual?
That's a point.
Yeah, it's because it's new. It's a paid one. I move to approve Stephen Everett signing the thirty-third annual sequel chase bike event fundraiser application for Saturday, August seventeenth, twenty-fourth, requested by the state, we are the tape. All those in favor?
I don't know.
I've not been on the way, yeah, and it's good over there. Uh, nine, nine forty-one appointments. I move to approve the appointment of Jeff Worthing as Marine Patrol Officer, Scotland. He's been there before, right? He's new to Marine Patrol, he's a retired uh, policeman, vote, perfect.
Lots of voting experience.
But in the town, any wait, three times. All those in favor? Uh, Tom is there. Good for him. Yeah, so I just uh, included the um, Town of Columbia Memorial Day Observance itinerary, you're all invited to May twenty-seventh at nine o'clock at the Veterans Memorial on Town Green. Chris Lynn, he's our master in your events, because Stephen Everett has a commitment. And also Tim Ackerman, our speaker, Zen and Ackerman. And also, Tim Ackerman, our state representative, and then Acker, Acker, thank you, that'd be Acker will be our guest speaker. And we'll also have um the Congregational Church Pastor Mary Ann Bertel doing the engagement, and also the St Columbus Reverend Michael Filippino doing the Good day.
Yes.
And then also, we have I just wonder whether you see the event that what happened on May sixteenth. Um Chris and TV and Bill.
And Lisa.
Yeah, he was our help. And uh it was a nice event. Um, the secretary Thomas was there. And um we spoke highly and we give awards for both five, ten, and over twenty years' participation as a poll worker. And um it was, it was well done.
It was funny.
It was a, a, a group of dedicated volunteers that you know, probably not ever received that kind of attention, so that was good. And then uh um I provided legislative updates, I don't think you need now, that um the last second Senator Looney threw a change into the car tax, it probably will throw everyone into a giant disarray. They're, they're eliminating commercial vehicles from being standard built through the DMV to, you have to declare your commercial vehicles on your personal property tax. Which, you know, might help you to uh define ten year depreciation instead of um the standard risk, it's cost, if the state says your vehicle worth, but uh we don't know, and that's going to require uh it'll be put towns into upheaval, because no one's gonna understand this. They've just always got the tax bill, and now they're gonna have to declare what their vehicles were as personal property.
That's actually what I'm gonna throw in at the last second, so everybody wants to get out of there, they go out, I just do it.
Right, and they promised that they won't do it. And I don't, I don't Um, also it's, it's, it's small. So now
Yes.
Trying to bring it back in session. We also have a um, anybody wants to be dark cam trained, we're having a May twenty third and nine thirty A M along Albert Hill. Uh, C R X coming in, you know, training with any important ones. You think you'll have other dates to sign this?
I do.
Yeah, cause this will be ongoing, the fire department will probably come in eventually.
It's good training, it could be a bad thing.
Also, I have um Danny I'm seeing Dan Johnson, purple president, he's got a job, he's gonna be working for E O Smith and S facilities. Um can enter in for the whole high school system. And don't be leaving at the end of this one. I haven't gotten it in writing, but he's accepted the offer. So that's unfortunate.
Yeah.
Dan was a huge asset.
Well, I'm here.
I I just, on that, I just wanna tell you if if you've never met Dan, or if you haven't talked to him a lot, I have, unfortunately, I haven't been able to talk to him or work with him and stuff. It's a huge asset at the time, it was a huge asset. Um, and part of the problem was that he would take all from anybody in town at any building for any reason. And it was running ragged. And three weeks ago, I sat down with him and I said, uh, it's all done, it stops right now, I'm not, we're not doing this, we're gonna come up with a work ticket system where there's gonna be your priority, one through five. And it will be looked at by you, and if you need help with that, I'd be happy to look at. And you go on the emergencies and the other stuff, put it in a calendar. And unfortunately um we haven't finalized that yet. And he, a couple of weeks ago or a month ago, we already put it into this position, and he had to make a decision, decided to leave. I've saw, I've seen him on too many stressful situations and uh we were, but we will have that in place for the next Congress and Center because it's a huge asset that we just lost, and he said it wasn't the money. It wasn't the money. Um
He's also being on call twenty four seven. You know, who he is, the the public director and facilities director on call, something blow up on Saturday. Uh, they come in and they get Dan got paid for, and then time coming in, but it, it adds stress to your life if you're always on call. So his new job, he only has to take a schedule, I'll be on call this weekend and I'll get paid for it and I'll be available. Like in one weekend. So that's Yeah, but big loss, thanks for the great work.
And I pay for it to finance this, I move to approve the refund, failing not hundred forty three dollars, eighty cents. Has next we have two. Um, he gets you know, there's other things that I told you that does Yeah, all of the fair. Sorry, good. Uh, I move to approve the payment of bills, so in two hundred forty seven thousand two hundred twenty one dollars, twenty four ten, considering a twenty three, twenty four emergency, twenty three, twenty four regular credit card and paychecks. And we will see that forty nine thousand dollar charge.
That's the vote.
No, that's the um EV charge present. You eat and out.
When would the vote have to be done?
It's about to start. There was also the start of the twenty fourth third. There's a delay to uh budget. Scraped up. All the, there's a check in here, we all this completion basis. We said on the twenty five. And I'm missing one now. We did get full refund from Irma, it just took a year to come. They didn't want to fund the amount, so we had to go back out to bid and think of the bid. The second time out, we got the numbers down.
It's covered by insurance there.
Yes. So, this silver Petroschelli sixty three, nine eighty five, and they're not meeting the timeline that they gave us.
You've got a whole
That's, that's H back.
Yeah, and she, she's saying they weren't kind of meeting the timeline they do.
Yeah.
Work and street, but you're still finalized in the design phase, so.
And um any discussion on the all those in favor of paying the bills? Are you considering? Uh, for member comments?
Governor mentioned this, this is a junior by nurse. Uh, the board of selectmen are invited to the wet down ceremony of a new rescue truck. It'll be June twenty third at eleven A M. And I have to look at mine. I saw that, I have to, and if you can't make it, then okay, and you can't leave one of the thanks.
For member comments now. This is an audition. They're done, uh, very good, so I move to adjourn. All those in favor? At this time, I was never even thought that was and now the motion I see.